Welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin. Today is Thursday, October the twenty fourth. We welcome those in the council chambers and those that are joining us online. If I could ask for council and staff to stand for the national anthem, please. Municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it's located on the land of the McKee Treaty and was signed by the, that was signed by the Yandotte and Anishapi nations, including ancestors of Chippewa. So the Thames First Nation, it is also the traditional territory of the Hottasani Adirondack Mississauga nations. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters and the municipality of Central Elgin. Council, does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest and then the general nature thereof? Seeing none. We don't have any delegation, so we're moving on to adoption of minutes. Questions or comments? Mover and a seconder. Deputy Mayor Noble. Counselor Halpin.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that the minutes of the special meeting of council dated June twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. Special meeting of council dated July eleventh, twenty twenty three. Regular meeting of council dated July seventeenth, twenty twenty three, and the special meeting of council dated August third, twenty twenty three be adopted.
All those in favor. Posed, carried. Moving on to correspondence, we have a letter from Elgin County with notification of an Elgin County Council Resolution, approving the Elgin Group policing agreement for an additional two years. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Connors and Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Connor, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the correspondence from Elgin County dated July twenty fifth, twenty twenty three be received and filed, and that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin approve the Elgin Group policing agreement for an additional two years.
All those in favor. Posed, carried. And item number two is the draft proclamation in support of Rail Safety Week. My guess is we don't have any questions or comments on that file, so seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder. Counsel, Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Connors, please.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the correspondence from CN Rail be received and filed, and that council endorse the draft proclamation as provided, and further that staff be directed to submit the completed proclamation to CN Rail.
All those in favor. Posed and carried. Items received for information, we have four items, one from Catfish Creek, two from Elgin County, and a letter from the town of Elmer. Counselors, any questions or comments on those items? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder for that they be received for information, Counselor Halpin and Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that correspondence items number one, two, three, and four be received for information and filed.
All those in favor. Posed. Carried. Moving on to reports, our first report is from the Central Elgin Planning Office, C E P four, six, two, three. Mr. McClure, are you speaking to this, sir?
I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any in council.
Thanks, Mr. McClure. Do questions or comments from any of the council? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder. Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report C E P forty six, twenty three be received, and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the township of Yarmouth zoning bylaw to satisfy conditions of a resident surplus to a farming operation severance on lands located at four, two, four, nine, six water tower line, which may be legally described as range one north edgware, part of lot two municipality of Central Elgin. And further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five forty six, Y forty five oh six as amended.
Thank you. All those in favor. Posed and carried. C E P four, seven, two, three, an application to amend township of Yarmouth bylaw. Uh, four, two, two, six, four, Ron McNeil line. Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder, please, Counselor Halpin and Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report C E P four, seven, twenty three be received, and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the township of Yarmouth zoning bylaw to permit an on-farm diversified use dog groomers salon on lands located at four, two, two, six, four, Ron McNeil line, which may be legally described as concession ten, part of lots two and three municipality of Central Elgin. And further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation five forty five oh six as amended.
All those in favor. Posed, carried. Next report is from the C A O, C A O nineteen, two, three, on strategic planning, Ms. Greenall, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, council. And on July eleventh, twenty twenty three, the interim CEO Wendell Clark, during a special meeting, walked council through the importance of a strategic planning process. He highlighted that strategic planning aids council in unifying your decisions, setting your goals and your directions for the term of your of council. Strategic planning also influences and helps staff prepare to meet your goals for the four-year term. During that meeting, um, council received the information that Wendell Graves provided and made a motion to investigate continuing on the strategic planning process. I reached out to Jennifer, excuse me, my just left, I reached out to Jennifer Kirkham of Mischievous Cats Productions to inquire where she was in the strategic planning process and the next steps in order to complete. Um, what she informed me was that she has done the basic data gathering, she has output the survey, gathered the data from the survey, and at this time, the remaining elements are to meet with council through a training session, to review what strategic planning can provide for you. Uh, how and to hear your input, to hear what you heard on the election circuit, to take your ideas and to put them together into a draft. From there, she would also have you help to develop themes for community focus groups. The remaining part also would have two to three focus groups where she will meet with members of the community and discuss what council is putting forward. And from that, all the information would be compiled, and she's recommending, and this is in addition to the original plan, was to have a small working group. And that small working group can be comprised and should be comprised of members of this council, as this is your strategic plan, and small group of staff. We will take all the information and draft up a strategic plan, bring it forward to council for your review and recommendations, and then further return it to council for approval. As you can note, that the cost for this, um, majority is already included within the contract that we provided or agreed to. There is an additional two thousand five hundred dollars, and that would be for the for the focus, not sorry, for the small working session groups. Those would be one to two groups. So council, um, it is, I am making the recommendation and hopefully seek your approval on continuing with the strategic planning for Central Elgin.
Thank you, Ms. Greenall. Do I have any questions or comments? Counselor Halpin?
Thank you, uh, through you, Mayor Sloan. Um, I was curious about the benefit of the working group specifically because uh, at the start of the year, when we talked about doing the strategic planning, there wasn't an idea of having only two people involved at any point in it, it was supposed to be the council throughout. And so it seems like we would be spending additional tax money in order to have fewer voices involved. Is there a specific way in which we benefit from having that addition?
Thank you, Ms. Greenall.
The working sessions would be facilitated by Jennifer Kirkham, and it would be encouraging to have members of council attend that working group. So you're hearing the voice, you as the collective, but you are the representative. And then she would facilitate both staff and council through the process of taking all of the ideas and the themes, drafting your goals and objectives, and then with staff setting, um, projects that we can attach to them over the four years. I feel because this process has, uh, started and then had a stall, a stop, that it would be beneficial for her to help reengage that and to facilitate those discussions.
Thank you, Ms. Greenall. Uh, Counselor Bachman is then next, then Counselor, um, Halpin.
Um, I for one think this is long overdue and we need to move on this. Um, we have to get something that we can set our course by, and this is step one. And to move forward, um, as a group, we need to have a direction, and if if we need it, then I'll put the motion out there that we move this forward.
Thank you, Counselor Connors. Do I have a seconder? You put the motion forward, is that correct? Thank you. Do I have a seconder? What did I say? Oh, shoot, apologies. Seconder from Counselor Halpin. You go ahead.
Thank you through you, Mayor Sloan. So, uh, if we agree to go with this, with the additional expense and with the working group, will we still have the originally anticipated private interviews with Ms. Kirkham and the group sessional as well?
Please.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Uh, yes, the intention would be first to meet with council as a whole, so she can hear, walk you through the process, she can hear, um, your voices and your thoughts and understand sort of as your collective, um, destination or visions. And then she would come back again with a small working group, so then out to the out to the community, she would take all of those ideas and they would be themed. Then she would take themes to the community and get community feedback. That then would be rolled into the final report, so council would put their themes out and hear back from community onto their themes. It helps.
Counselor Connors, please.
Uh, through you, Mayor. Um, Ms. Greenall, um, is this standard procedure? Have we done this before? I mean, I, the way that Wendell presented it to us, the way I interpret it is that we have done this before, and this is the routine that we normally go through? Is that the case?
Screenel.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. It is my understanding Central Elgin has a previous strategic plan. I can go back to see what process they used or who facilitated that discussion. And I will also make sure that council has that strategic plan before we engage Ms. Kirkham to join us, so that you're understanding the visions of past council, understanding what the community voice was through that process, and then help you support what your visions are for the next four years. Processes to achieve a strategic plan can look different. This has some familiar components in that council is, we're hearing council's voice, you're hearing voice of staff, but more importantly, you're hearing the voice of your community. That helps you to understand that your directions are representative of your constituents, if that helps.
Well said. Follow up, Mr. Counselor Connors.
Just one follow up. Uh, Ms. Greenall, you mentioned that she would go to the community. What platform does she use to go to the, or do you know? And is it Facebook? Is it, how do you, how does she go to the community and get the response?
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding from reading is it can be virtual, uh, and I think that is her preferred platform, though if there is a recommendation, I could take it to her if you would like to see it in person.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Um, Ms. Greenall, we're looking for two members of council to participate, or are we going to pass the motion and then add that after?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think that would be at your direction. If you would like to add it into the the motion, we certainly can make that amendment.
Um, well, I've seen some some passion from Counselor Bachman on this on this. Is there anyone else that has any interest in this? Counselor Graham, Counselor Halpin. Counselor, uh, Counselor Connors? Okay. I'm going once, twice, sorry. So we have, um, one, two, three, four for two seats. Is that the way we see it? And I guess we should figure out who the two successful candidates are. Ms. Greenall, thoughts?
If I might, Mr. Mayor, during the remainder of this, uh, of this session, we are also looking for a council to engage in the budget planning process. If you'd like to pass the resolution or the amendment as as it is now, and perhaps when we go into it under new business or old business where we're looking for for budget, perhaps we could add the members at that time. That way, you may want to divide and conquer which two would like to attend budget and which two may wish to attend.
Good. Okay, then I'll take that advice, Ms. Leach. So we have a mover and a seconder. Ms. Leach, I guess now we're. Yep, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report C A O nineteen, twenty three regarding strategic planning be received for information, and that council proceed to reengage with Jennifer Kirkham of Mischievous Cat Consulting to complete the strategic planning process and to support the additional cost of two thousand five hundred dollars plus H S T to facilitate a small working group to complete the draft strategic plan. And further that council recommend up to two members to participate in the working group sessions.
All those in favor. Posed. Carried. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Greenall. Next up, Director of Infrastructure and Community Service Surveillance, Surveillance Audit Report Drinking Water Quality Management System. Questions or comments before on this one? Straightforward. Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report I C S twenty two, twenty three Surveillance Audit Report Drinking Water Quality Management System be received as information.
All those in favor. Posed. That is carried. Thank you. Item number two, St. Thomas Suburban Area Drinking Water Quality Management System Management Review Report. Any questions from council? Seeing none, mover and a seconder, please, Counselor Bachman and Deputy Mayor Noble, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report I C S twenty three, twenty three, St. Thomas Suburban Area Drinking Water Quality Management System Management Review Report be received as information.
All those in favor. Posed. That is carried. Item number three, Ministry of the Environment Conservation and Parks Central Logan Distribution System Inspection Report. Council. Questions, comments? Seeing none, again, if I could ask for a mover and a seconder, Counselor Halpin, Counselor Connors. You.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report I C S twenty four, twenty three Ministry of the Environment Conservation and Parks Central Logan Distribution System Inspection Report be received as information.
All those in favor. Posed. Carried. I C X, I C S two, six, two, three, Union Area Sanitary Servicing. Questions or council, uh, Counselor Graham, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wondering if, uh, two questions really. Was StanTech a sole source provider for this, or did it go out to tender? Maybe if Mr. Brooks knows that.
Sir.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, StanTech was sole source uh, for this project, uh, based on their knowledge of both the collection system, uh, pump station fifty one, the, um, union area servicing, and, uh, the developers, um, eagerness to get going on it. So, uh, we figured, uh, hiring StanTech would, um, make the most efficient, um, use of time on this. If we were to hire a different consultant that wasn't, uh, familiar with the area, then we could potentially delay this project even further.
And a follow-up question, uh, Mr. Brooks, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, when we're talking about having StanTech reevaluate it, we're not, were the, did they not provide all options originally? Or they only provided one option? Why do they, I'm just wondering about the need to reevaluate if they provided us with a report with multiple options.
Mr. Brooks, please.
The StanTech did provide multiple options, however, in the E A, it was requested that, uh, or it was directed to StanTech that, uh, they not consider the um, Port Stanley Collection System as Pump Station Fifty One had recently been upgraded back in twenty seventeen, so it it was staff's belief at that time that there was plenty of capacity in Pump Station Fifty One. We did understand that there may be some sewer upgrades as a result of pumping flows from Port Stan or from Union into Port Stanley, but we weren't aware of the potential need to upgrade Pump Station Fifty One. In order to pump or upgrade, uh, Pump Station Fifty One, a significant financial investment would be required. So we really want to have StanTech take a second look at the option to pump flows directly through Southold West directly to the plant, which would bypass the Port Stanley Collection System, thereby negating the need to upgrade Pump Station Fifty One as well as upgrade, uh, gravity sewers.
Okay, so just so I'm understanding, we told StanTech to look at the Port Stanley Pumping Station because we weren't aware, staff wasn't aware that it was going to need such a big upgrade, and so they didn't look at going through Southold originally?
They did look at, uh, going through Southold originally. However, it was thought to be cheaper to go into Port Stanley at that time because staff wasn't aware of the potential need to upgrade Pump Station Fifty One. Now that we have the Port Stanley, uh, sanitary sewer collection system totally modeled, we have some understanding that if we do direct flows from Union into Port Stanley, some further investment in the Port Stanley infrastructure is going to be required. If we go, you know, take that, take a second look at that other option of going through Southold, it might be, uh, a higher upfront investment, but cheaper in the long run. So we really want to have StanTech confirm staff's beliefs that, uh, uh, first of all, that upgrades might be required in the Port Stanley system, and second, take a look at, uh, going west through Southold again, just to compare what those costs would be.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Connors, I think, has a quick question. Not that it has to be quick, but.
Yes, through you, Mayor. Um, so, Mr. Brooks, in the past, StanTech has been fairly competitive, I guess, as far as their bids, just overall. If you could just speak to that, and, uh, uh, were they aware that they were being sole sourced here?
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, please.
Uh, so StanTech has been competitive in the past. Uh, we've done two E As in the past, uh, with regards to wastewater servicing, one in twenty fifteen to look at, uh, the upgrades required at the former lagoon, um, treatment center down in Port Stanley, so they had, uh, they were the successful, um, proponent through that R F P. And again, in twenty nineteen, I believe, is when we went out for the Union Area E A. They're also the successful proponent through the Union E A, so the two major E As that we have put forth over the past, you know, ten years, StanTech has won.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Halpin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report I C S twenty six, twenty three be received for information, and that council of the municipality of Central Elgin accept the work plan and cost estimate from StanTech in the amount of twenty seven thousand fifty five dollars.
All those in favor. Posed. Carried. Next item is from the Director of Financial Services and our Treasurer, D F S one, nine, two, three. Apologies, we are had I S three, two, seven, two, three wastewater shared servicing. Questions or comments from council? Counselor Graham, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Brooks again, was that, was this another sole source with StanTech?
Mr. Brooks.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, it was, uh, a sole sourced, um, quote from StanTech. Uh, the reason being is Southold, uh, is really looking for an answer quickly here in regards to the ability to connect to the Port Stanley wastewater treatment plant. They are getting significant pressure from the development community up in Southold. So in order to move this forward expeditiously, we thought it, uh, best to, um, get StanTech on board here as they both designed the plant and did the contract administration of the wastewater treatment plant in Port Stanley, so, uh, you know, they're very familiar with the the area.
Thank you, Counselor Halpin.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Sloan. It seems like we're focusing a lot on the manner of sourcing rather than the content of the report. And we as a council have sole sourced on a number of things or contemplated sole sourcing many times. Is there a reason that this impacts the report itself or that we need to know this for better understanding?
Um, the question, is there a question there? Is that through me to to?
Yes, through you. Well, I suppose either to Counselor Connors or Counselor Graham or anyone else that's curious about the sole sourcing. Is there a reason that we are looking to understand that in order to understand the report itself?
Counselor Graham.
I'd like to understand all details of any of the reports that are coming across the desk, so there's always a reason that I'm looking for more information.
Thank you. Counselor Connors.
Uh, through you, Mayor, to Counselor Halpin, um, anytime you tender, um, you know, uh, most people that I've dealt with in the private sector have a limitation of five thousand or ten thousand dollars to spend. And anytime after that, they have to go to tender. I know the rules are different here, but I'd just like to know that whether we're sole sourcing, whether or not, and the and the logic behind it, so that in case a constituent asks me a question, I have an answer.
Thank you, both counselors. Um, any further questions? Counselor Watson.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just like to make a comment. Uh, I really liked the answers that, uh, Mr. Brooks gave us, so I thought it was very helpful when these questions were posed to him, so, thank you.
Compliment for Mr. Brooks. Thank you, Mr. Brooks, for your presentation. Can I get a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Halpin, Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report I C S twenty seven, twenty three be received for information, and that council of the municipality of Central Elgin direct staff to accept the work plan and cost estimate from StanTech in the amount of twenty four thousand one hundred three dollars excluding H S T.
All those in favor. Posed. Carried. Moving on to the Director of Financial Services and Treasurer, negotiating construction tenders. Um, I know Counselor Connors is, uh, probably has comments on this. Did, is there, is there anything, Ms. Scoop, to harry from your, uh, did you wish to speak to this, or?
Um, I would just make a couple of notes here that we did this a poll through Ontario Public Buyers Association called O P V A, which most municipal procurement staff or our members are, and, uh, we asked like if, uh, who negotiates the construction tenders. Uh, there are several hundred members, but, uh, there were six from the area, which included City of London, St. Thomas, and Elgin County, who also said that they, uh, they did not negotiate, uh, construction tenders. So that's what the point I would like to make, other than that everything is in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Connors, please.
Uh, through you, Mayor. Um, our China, can I ask you, uh, what question you posed to these municipalities? Like, how did you ask the question?
So it was basically that when we have the tenders bidding, do we go negotiate? Once the tenders are open, and the answer was no, that's called shop bidding, we cannot do that. And as per our bylaw, for example, which states that we could negotiate, that is for, not for construction tenders, they are for small where you can actually go with the three codes or something and just go and negotiate.
Okay, just.
Does that answer the question?
Uh, it it prompts another question. So through you, Mayor, our China, so my point on this whole issue was we're trying to save taxpayer taxpayers' money. And so if we can negotiate a better deal, uh, through the tender process. through the tender process, then I'm all for that. But my, my question revolved around this point. If we go to tender and let's just pick on Front Street again, tenders coming in at 5.1 million. Mr. Brooks has said that the, that the budget for that was 3.5. We're $1.6 million over budget. So in those cases where you're over budget, can you go back to the low three or the low whatever bidders and say, listen, we're looking for cost savings, we're over budget, budget? We don't want to spend our, our taxpayers' money when we don't have to. Is there a way that we can lower this amount or, because if not, it doesn't look like it's going to go ahead. So all I'm saying is if we're over budget, can we go back to the low three and say, look, we're looking for cost savings? And can you supply something? If you can't, then we understand it likely won't go ahead.
Actually, no, that's where the whole thing is that that's why we have the bids and tenders. Once it's put, we put the requirements in. So basically, that's what they respond to. Right? The requirements are right in the tender. And what we are asking, they are giving the cost for the same. And then when we go back, basically, it's, we are saying either we have to say we are cutting on these things and put the tender again. But you cannot do it after you have opened the tenders.
So coming from.
Pull it back, yes.
So coming from where I come from, the private sector, I mean, architects and, and owners have wishes and wish lists. And they go out to tender and they say, yeah, we want all this stuff. And then when it comes in and it comes in a million over budget, they say, hmm, I don't really want to spend that money. So I want to go back to the low three and look for some cost savings. Now, you're hiring consultants, you're hiring architectural planners. I don't know exactly what you guys hire or how you do it, but you're hiring these people who put together their wish list. And this is what they want for you. Now, there may be other things that are out there that are just as good, if not better, and much less money. And that's what I'm driving at.
You are absolutely right. And in private sector, we can definitely do that. I, I worked in private sector as well. So we definitely can do that in private sector, but public sector does not allow for these kind of things because that's conflict of interest. That's treated as that conflict of interest. In public sector, it's treated as conflict of interest. For example, you may be going to the lowest bidder, who could be your friend or whosoever, or you could ask for somebody else to come in and do that for you for a lower cost. But then there is compromise. So that's why we, if we are going by tenders, we have to go by that. And I saw Mr. Brooks hand up. Probably he wants to add something to that.
Yeah, we have some question. Just one, one, one quick moment, Ms. Gupta, Harriet, I have.
Sorry about that. Yeah.
It's okay. No, no, absolutely. I've got, because you're I've got three counselors and Mr. Brooks and myself. So, Mr. Brooks, do you want, wish to, to, to check? Give us your input, please. Thank you.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, to address Counselor Connors' instance where we may have budgeted three and a half million and we get a tender in at five million. So I don't believe you're allowed to go back and negotiate with certain bidders. I think the correct way forward from there would be to make significant changes to that tender. It could be a matter of a phased, phased tender. So you take it out in two phases and construct it. You know, you tender half of it. So you've made a significant change and then you would reissue the tender. So, you know, in order to re-tender fairly quickly, you really need to make some substantial changes to that tender and then reissue it rather than trying to negotiate with the low three bidders.
So just, Mr. Brooks, just quickly, what happened in the case of the Port Stanley dredging when we changed it after we'd done the tender? We added to it.
So the Ontario standard specifications allow tenders to be extended a certain amount. For example, if you're in a road project or let's say the dredging project, if you have 10,000 cubic meters of excavation, you're allowed to exceed that by 15% while still utilizing that same unit price. And that's what occurred with the dredging project.
Thank you. Of Counselor Graham and then Counselor Halpin.
Through you, Mr. Chair. In the procurement bylaw 2448, section 5131D, it actually says that we are allowed to do that. Says the procurement and risk management coordinator may acquire any goods or services through negotiation where D, the lowest bid exceeds the estimated cost and it is impractical, impractical to recall the bid. So that specifically is exactly what I believe Counselor Connors is talking about. We put out a bid for three point, or put out a tender for 3.5, 3.8, all bids came in at over that. And as such, we are allowed to negotiate based on our own bylaws.
That is for goods and services through you, Mr. Mayor. Not for the tenders that we put out. So, for example, if you want to go out, it is more than 15,000 and less than 50,000 where we need three codes or something. Say we are buying some benches or something for office, you know, desks for office and we, we have that much money. And we know we cannot spend more than 50,000. The procurement coordinator definitely can go in, but that's not a tender. This, we are talking about the tenders where the construction services or those kind of contracts are being done or dredging kind of projects, not the goods and services. If that helps answering the question for you. So that definitely can go where procurement and risk, risk and procurement analysts could actually go and negotiate. That definitely allows for that.
Counselor Graham, follow up and then Counselor Halpin.
And I've reviewed this bylaw quite in depth. It doesn't say that. It says services, goods and or services. So for me, if we're looking at what Counselor Connors had talked about, that is a service for them to come in and stabilize that slope. That is a service. And it is talking about tenders because it's talking about bids. So my understanding, and I had someone from another municipality take a look at this. And it seems to be the consensus that this bylaw actually does apply specifically to that.
A scoop to read?
So, not to my understanding, maybe the other people who have that background may be interpreting it differently, but this is how 14 years of my experience in procurement within the province and the provincial bylaws and guidelines. This is how I interpret it. And this is how it has been interpreted always that goods and services are very different from the projects that are like dredging or consulting services or something that are millions of dollars. And every time we have to go for a tender that cannot be negotiated once it's out. Or when, once it's open, you can cancel it. Definitely. You can renegotiate it in the sense that you can rescale it or something, but you cannot just shop bid it after finalized, once the tender is open. So we, like in our case, for France.
But I'm gonna, I didn't hear the last part. Counselor Halpin and then Counselor Connors.
Thank you. Through Mayor Sloan. So my understanding of the difference between RFT and RFP is that when we request tender, we propose the work that we need done and companies propose back what that would cost. And with RFP, we give a more broad sense of what we need the end result to be. And they propose the nature of the work and also the cost. And then we can put different weight onto different aspects to decide what the best deal is. If we're not able to negotiate on tenders, would there be value for Central Elgin in relying more heavily on RFPs and putting a higher amount of weight onto the price so that we can sort of flex different options that are provided to us and look for the best deal within them?
Yes, through Mayor, through you, Mayor Sloan, there is also something that is called RFI, which is request for information. So before putting the tenders out or before doing any RFPs or RFTs, you can actually ask for information. And that goes out like a kind of a tender and people give you information on that. And in that particular one, you can actually ask for guestimates. That won't be exactly the amount. It could be, people could come and say 10% plus minus, but they definitely can give you some idea. And province uses it for bigger projects always. They do the RFI first and then they go out and do the RFPs. Or RFBs, they also call request for bids. Or RFP, request for proposal, they are kind of same thing or request for tenders. But you can definitely do RFI or RFQ, which is request for quotes or request for, you know, information before you actually go for tenders. Does that answer your question, Ms. Halpin?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Connors.
So through you, Mayor, Arjana. Just on, on your first point back to me on conflict of interest and with, with other people bidding. I mean, typically there's conflict of interest declarations that are in tender documents that have to be filled out by the bidders. So they have to identify that. And that's a, that's a, an open and public quorum that everybody knows about, right? So, you know, if it was your brother-in-law or your brother or your sister, then everybody would know that, right? So that's really not an issue here. You know, we learned from our meetings with the Construction Association about certain products and one product in particular that was specified for this front street job, which most contractors hadn't heard of the product before and recommended something much less expensive. So I'm not saying that I want you to call a contractor X and say, hey, listen, chump. If you can lower your price to this, then you're going to get the job. That's not what I'm saying here. What I'm saying is, I don't know if you've heard of this, but there's something called a post-tender addendum. So you can go with a post-tender addendum, back out to the public. You can go to all contractors if you want and ask for cost savings, cost saving measures and things that can help us get to the point where we want to get to. It's not negotiating with one contractor. It's negotiating with the group and going back out to the group to be fair to everyone.
And that is absolutely correct, what you are saying, Counselor Connors. You could do that as addendum, what Mr. Brooks had mentioned, like you can expand on it or you can kind of cut on it and you can do the addendum, definitely. But you cannot go for lower three bidders or two bidders. You have to go to full group. That definitely you can do, but you cannot go to one or two. You cannot pick and choose. That's what we are trying to kind of confirm here. And that's what Mr. Brooks also told you, like right away, you could go back and say, there is a change and this is what we are heading because are we going to phase it out or are we going to change it? Even if it's that substantial changes where you are heading and you can change things. And I think our contracts allow for 10 to 15% of those changes within the addendum.
Fair enough. As long as we can go back out, that's what I'm after.
But not to two or three, I didn't say that. I'm.
No, that's fine. Then we go back to the whole group.
Yes.
That's fine.
Definitely, as an addendum, yes.
Mr. Mr. Brooks and Counselor Bachman, please.
I just wanted to add too, well, typically when we go through the tendering process, we, you know, we, we try to form our tenders. So there is no, or there are no addendums through the process, but inevitably throughout the tendering process, typically there are two to three addendums that occur through that tendering process before we close the tender. And to your point, quite often, if a contractor does find cost savings or they find an alternate material that can be used, they will typically ask that question to the municipality. It will be considered by staff as well as the staff's consultant. And then an addendum can be issued. So quite often that does occur during the tender process. And, you know, I think going back to Front Street, I think there was two or three addendums that occurred through the process of Front Street. So, you know, contractors are always able to contact the procurement coordinator and ask questions like that. If they have an alternate material that wasn't specified, they can ask that question. It can be considered and then added as an addendum into that tender.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman.
I'm trying to recall the education that Mr. Perrin gave us before he left on the tendering process. And it wasn't just price. It was also the ability of the company to deliver their, their skill set and whether or not they can meet the needs that we were putting out as well as. So it was kind of a point system, was it not, Mr. Brooks?
It's not a point system through the tendering or the construction tendering process. An RFP has a point scoring system that we help, that we use to help score a proposal.
Okay, so moving forward with, with the whole tendering process, I'm looking, I guess, from a different perspective, and I understand Mr. Connor's perspective on this. But if, if I'm tendering, if I'm the one putting the bid in, if there's a way I can get it cheaper, then I'm going to put the bid in cheaper. Yeah, like I'm looking at from a business point of view, if Mr. Connors is, here's, here's the criteria. But then I'm in business going, hey, there's another way I can do this. So I'm going to put my bid in and do it this way and I can get it. Wouldn't that be in their best interest? To put in a lower bid to get the contract at that particular moment? If they know of a product that's going to be better? I mean, that's just good business, I would think. I realize $5 million is, is a significant number for us, but we're talking about companies that are dealing with multimillion dollar projects. And if they can meet our needs, now the issue I'm seeing with this is that we can't shortcut on a project of this magnitude without affecting the residents of that neighborhood. If we shortcut something and we do it not to the specifications that's necessary and we shortcut it to save a few bucks, but then we have it fail five or 10 years from now, then what good was it spending that amount of money? If you're going to do it, do it right. Do it right the first time.
Thank you. I think, and Counselor Connors, please. And when we're speaking specifically to this motion, it has to do with how we negotiate our tenders. Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. So just in answer to Counselor Bachman's question. And I don't know, Arjana, how your, your tenders are structured. But typically in a, in a, in a government tender, if you qualify anything, you're kicked out. So you have to bid as per plans and specs. And everybody bids the same thing. So yes, I understand there could be other ways we could do this. And this is my whole point. But you have to bid the tender as per plans and specs, otherwise you're thrown out. The meetings that the two counselors and the mayor had with the London Construction Association talked about how they could save us money. And there was two key points here. One point was a certain material that was being used that no one had ever heard of before. And they could use this other material and save a, a whack of money, which was just as resilient, just as durable and just as tough. The other point was, is that we could do it through the winter and rather than doing it at the time that we had specified and we could save some money as well. So, but these come back after you go back to all the bidders and you say, look, it, we're over budget. We need to, we need some cost savings. Can you offer some up? And at that point is when you start to talk about, you know, yes, we can do this or yes, we can do that and save your money here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if I could get a mover in a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Halpin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report DFS 1923 be received as information in response to the resolution carried at the regular meeting of council dated April 24, 2023 regarding procurement.
All those in favor? Posed? Carried. DFS 2023 request for tenders for 2023, I think that's 24, supply and delivery of one single axle dump truck with winter equipment and plow and wing attachments. Questions and comments? It, it does mention three. Except the tender from Watford Lincoln for 2023, 24 fleet vehicles, three quarter ton pickup trucks in the amount of 197. So I just wanted some clarification on that. And then I'll go to Counselor Graham. Mr. Brooks, please.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, the, that is for three 2024 F350 four by four super cab trucks.
So the one single axle dump truck?
The single axle dump truck went, I believe, at a previous meeting, I, it was July or June that was approved.
Okay, so we're going to have to table this if it's not the information. Counselor Graham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Brooks. So we're looking at three vehicles. Can we, can you tell me what the year of the current trucks are and what the mileage is on the current trucks that we're looking at sending to auction?
Mr. Brooks?
The three trucks that we would be sending to auction are 2015s for the heavy duty trucks. We rotate those in and out on an eight-year cycle. Truck five has 189,000 kilometers on it. Truck 10 has 180,000. And truck 45 has 215,000 kilometers.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks.
Sorry, was that 215 or 250?
215.
Follow up, Counselor Connors, please.
Through you, Mayor, Mr. Brooks. Uh through you, Mayor, uh Mister Brooks. Um most, maybe I'm wrong here, but I thought most of the vehicles that we use are leased, is that incorrect?
Mr. Brooks.
That's incorrect, uh by law, uh enforcement officers utilize leased cars during the summer. And then they return those at the end of the summer, all of uh the uh truck fleet is purchased.
Do you have a significant, like in other words, have these trucks, these three trucks been costing. Quite a bit of money over the past two or three years to repair, I mean, the kilometers are getting up, but they probably are V eights. So can you speak to that at all?
Uh my apologies, I don't have the uh history of uh repairs on these uh particular trucks. I I typically when we tender uh a tandem or a larger dump truck, I typically gather that information. Uh but uh we typically swap them in and out on an eight-year cycle. That's been found to provide the best value where we still get a decent amount of money at auction when we go to sell these trucks. As opposed to the ongoing maintenance of owning a truck past eight years. So it's it's really a balance of trying to get rid of a truck at the right time.
So this hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars will be offset by the by the amount of money that we get through uh auction.
That is correct.
Counselor Connors, or sorry, Counselor Graham, please.
Through you, Mister Chair, um I think that because we're going. Be my recommendation or my suggestion that because we're going over budget with how much we budgeted for twenty twenty-three for fleet uh. Um fleet renewal or whatever you want to call it, that we would push this to twenty twenty-four, that way we're not taking any from our reserves because we want to. Try and build up reserves, not take our down our reserves and. I don't see that that would, I mean, possibly one of them and then or even two of them, but uh so that there's no money coming out of reserves. It would appear that we would probably be able to move that to twenty twenty-four in the twenty twenty-four budget or split them so it's not doing all three. Unless there's a reason that we can't split them like that.
Mister Brooks, please.
Well, I won't give you a reason why we can't split them, but uh all of the funds that are paying for the three trucks come out of the equipment replacement reserve. So it's all coming out of reserves uh for these trucks, so you know, if we kick it down the road till next year. You know, we we can do that with one of the trucks, but that cost doesn't go away, it's still going to be um, you know. A certain, whether it be sixty-nine thousand or whatever it be in twenty twenty-four, we'll still need to replace that truck. And uh we do have a healthy balance in the equipment replacement reserve.
Um first, Counselor Watson, and then Counselor Graham.
Through you, Mister Mayor, uh when it's written down here, it says twenty twenty-three through to thirty-four, does that mean we're buying them for about eleven years? But we could sell them at any time, like in eight or seven-year span? Like, is is that what I'm reading? Is that supposed to be a purchase for ten years? When I see that, or is that something unrelated?
Yeah.
Just asking the question.
Miss Delaney, or sorry, Miss Leach.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, from my understanding, that is the tender number.
Yeah, no, no, because he said, Mister Brooks said eight years and I wondered the same thing, so thanks for clarifying that. You talked about eight years, is that correct, Mister Mister Brooks?
Correct, for heavy-duty, the lighter-duty trucks, we uh um go on a seven-year cycle. The larger equipment, uh the tandem dump trucks, we go on a ten-year cycle.
Can I ask a question, Mister Brooks, how many trucks do we have?
I believe we have twenty-seven trucks in the fleet.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Graham.
So just to clarify through you, Mister Chair to Mister Brooks, um in the bottom section of that report, it says, you said everything's coming out of reserves, but. Um. So it's just two different sets of reserves, is that correct? The three eighty-six, one ninety-four is already committed. For the single axle, the five seventy-five was budgeted, but that leaves twelve-five, that's left over and that's coming just from a different reserve.
Mister Brooks, please.
So for clarification, the five seventy-five is what we budgeted for all the fleet replacements. So the three eighty-six has already been committed to uh that I believe it was a single axle that we were replacing. That one came in higher than what we were anticipating, the costs of those single axle dumps have gone up significantly over the past. Year or so, so that pushes us twelve thousand five hundred and eleven dollars over the five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That we had originally budgeted for the replacements, they all, all of the costs come from the equipment replacement reserve. So what what we had anticipated was taking five seventy-five out of the equipment reserves, really what we're going to have to do is take. Five eighty-seven out of the reserves.
Um can I please make a comment?
Yes, please, go ahead, Mr. Mary.
Thank you, so actual amount will be because we are HST exempt in buying these kind of things, actual amount that will additionally come from the. Reserve would be two thousand three hundred fifty only, not twelve thousand, because everything else is like HST. So it would be two thousand three hundred fifty, but because when we put the uh amounts out and everything, when we get the codes. They do not come as sans HST, so we have to give you exact amounts what comes along with the HST. But we are HST exempt and we get that prepaid, so it's only two thousand three hundred fifty that will come out of the reserve. In addition to whatever we have already committed, which is five seventy-five thousand, uh five seventy-five hundred thousand. Um to the to this uh this fleet. Hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? If I could get a mover and a seconder, please, Counselor Halpin and Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report DFS twenty twenty-three regarding requests for tenders. Twenty twenty-three thirty-four fleet vehicles, three-quarter ton pickup trucks be received for information. And that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin accept the tender from Watford Ford Lincoln Incorporated. For twenty twenty-three thirty-four fleet vehicles, three-quarter ton pickup trucks in the amount of one ninety-seven eight thirty-five plus all applicable taxes.
All those in favor? Opposed? Oceans defeated. Director of Fire Service Rescue Fire Chief Report Monthly Alarm and Activities Report. Anyone have any questions or comments on that report? If I could get a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Watson, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that report FS nine twenty-three regarding monthly alarm activities. Report July twenty twenty-three be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Director of Asset Management Development Services, AMDS four zero two-three, the Ju- July monthly by bylaw reports. Any questions or comments on the bylaw reports, counsel? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Bachman, Counselor Halpin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that report AMDS forty twenty-three regarding July twenty twenty-three. Monthly bylaw report be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? AMDS four one two-three, the July monthly building report, questions or comments from council on the building report? Seeing none, if I could get a mover and a seconder, please, Deputy Mayor Noble, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report AMDS forty-one twenty-three regarding July twenty twenty-three. Monthly building report be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Now we're into bylaws. Um if I could get a mover and a seconder for the bylaws, please, Counselor Connors, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that bylaw two eight one seven, two eight one nine and two eight two three. Be read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? And I need a mover and a seconder for third and final, Counselor Halpin, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that bylaw two eight one seven, two eight one nine and two eight two three. Be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Don't have any notice of motion, other business, wastewater, financial plan, steering committee appointments. Is this through um Ms. Gupta Hareed?
Uh yes, Mister Mayor Sloan, so.
Do you wish to speak to this, please?
Yes, please, thank you. So um Mayor Sloan, I'm requesting the council to provide two different counselors. For two different committees, so basically four different counselors for two different co- uh committees, one is the budget committee. And the other one is the water wastewater financial plan committee.
So can you give some background on this? Was there, was this, was this done in past councils, there were council on it, I I'd just like a bit more information, please?
Uh no, this is the first time I'm trying to do that is to make the process little bit uh smoother for the new council. So I'm proposing that because in my previous works, I have actually applied that with some good uh, you know, boards and everything. So I'm proposing that we go that route, and this is only for um. Basically bringing, uh I think sometimes it helps hearing from peers. So that's why I'm proposing that we do that, so that people are fully involved and also. Um they can, you know, understand things better. And definitely we will come as groups back to the full council as well, that doesn't mean that we will preclude the council from making any decisions.
Counselor or Deputy Counselor Halpin and then Ms. Greenall, please.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Sloan, um it looks like we need two for our water plan, two for our budget plan and two for mischievous cats. And I believe our procedural bylaw says that you have a de facto place on all of our councils. Or all of our committees regardless of who is appointed to them, so could we maybe look at getting each, since there's six of us remaining, two. Into each divided that way?
Well, if I'm on all three of them, there would only be three people.
Through you, I believe that what it says in our procedural is that regardless of who is appointed, you also have a spot on all of our committees.
I believe I'm one of the two. So, Ms. Greenall, did you wish to say something?
If I may, the the question was if this has been common and other municipalities do create committees, particularly a budget steering committee. It helps council to be engaged in the process from the beginning through the end. It provides um a representation of our constituents' voice, and it also helps for when staff is developing. Um processes or the budget that they hear council's opinion during the process, so it is quite common. For other municipalities to have engaged in in committees and to engage councils in process.
Thanks for the input, appreciate it, Ms. Greenall, go ahead.
If I might, and um Ms. Leach, you may want to chime in, I do believe that as a de facto that you may sit. Um separate from the two committees, you, as a de facto, you may sit on any committee of which you choose.
Oh, any committee, hmm. Um with respect to. Um how many people do you see sitting on the committee uh from your, from staff side, Ms. Gupta Hareed?
Um so for for example, for water wastewater, uh it's myself, Mister Brooks, uh we're manager of finance. And manager of water wastewater, so four of us, and I was hoping two counselors. Uh which basically um and you can be in addition or you could be, you know, uh by de facto. It doesn't really matter to us like which way you want to, the council wants to decide about that. For budget as well, it would include CAO, it would include uh the, all the directors uh of the uh Central Elgin.
So it's quite a large group, um what's the will of council, what would you like to see? Does anyone wish to sit on the um uh Counselor Watson, you're already doing a lot of water. Wastewater stuff, does this fall under your bailiwick, sir?
Through you, Mister Mayor, well, the water and wastewater, I don't know as much about, um but I kind of. Promise that I would uh sit on the budget steering committee and be like a team leader in that, I would really like to be part of that.
Okay.
Going forward.
Counselor Connors.
So through you, Mayor, would this be an ongoing thing, in other words, would we be looking for the same type of people, same number of people next year? To sit on these committees?
I I don't know, annual, that's the other thing, I don't, there's not a lot of information here.
Curiosity.
Can we put, can we, I was gonna say if we could defer this to the next meeting, please, and we have more information, please. Ms. Greenall.
The Strategic Planning Committee would just be one, be this year. Because once we have the plan in place, then we go to implementing. Uh I would recommend, though I would certainly uh listen to the direction of Ms. Gupta Hareed. As for for the budget committee, uh it is quite common for that to be um a continuous. But council's direction, you may change those committee members with the new year coming forward and the wastewater would be the same.
Thanks, Ms. Greenall, I appreciate that, can I have, just one moment, please, can I get a motion to put this off until the fourteenth meeting so that I understand?
Mister Mayor, before you put that, can I please speak?
Please.
Okay, sorry to interrupt, Mister Mayor, so Mister Mayor, we have to get the water, so water wastewater will not come another five years. It's only one time in five years, so in your uh span of council, it will not happen again.
But you you've told us that the last council didn't do this, is that correct?
Didn't, no, so it was in twenty nineteen, I believe, that happened, right? So twenty twenty-one, like this year, if you are here, it's good for next five years, so you will not be participating in the next one. Like the same council, I hope you get re-elected and everything is same again, but it will not be within the four-year span. Number two, we have a tight timeline, our next meeting is not until eleventh September. And the first steering committee that Watsons want to deal with us is first week of September or August end. So I really need two people who can sit on that committee, help understand things and help us move forward on finance budget. I'm okay with differing it and maybe strategic plan two, but for steering committee for water wastewater, I request humbly. That it be taken care of like this evening if it's possible.
Thank you, Mister Brooks, did you wish to speak?
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor, I'll echo uh uh Ms. Gupta Hareed's uh sentiments about moving this forward quickly. With regards to the water wastewater financial plan, uh and I'll speak to the past. Uh in the past, there have been uh members of council who have sat on a committee in order to prepare those uh financial plans.
Thank you, Ms. Counselor Graham and then Counselor Halpin.
I would suggest that we could probably uh decide on the wastewater one tonight and defer the other two until we have a little more information uh on it and then. Just to have that decision for the water and wastewater, since it's it's detrimental in timing.
Thank you, Counselor, oh, Counselor Halpin, you're next, and then Counselor Bachman.
Uh thank you through you, Mayor Sloan, uh I agree that if we had to, we could defer the budget one, but I think that considering we're a little late on our strategic plan. It might be worth doing both of those one-shot ones tonight, but my question was actually to Mister Brooks, and that was. Uh which two wards have the highest ratio of municipal water and wastewater use?
Well, I guess it'd be Belmont and Port Stanley.
That would be correct.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman.
Um I wanted to echo um Counselor Halpin's comments on the strategic plan, we're behind, like. Almost a year behind on getting a strategic plan in place, I think we need to move on that, move on it quickly.
Not quite a year, Counselor Halpin?
Could I nominate Counselors Bachman and Counselor Graham to uh be our water committee, considering that they have the most users?
What about Counselor or Counselor Graham shaking her head?
No, I I would decline that.
Uh Counselor Deputy Mayor Noble, please.
I uh I'll sit on the water wastewater, if if we need somebody.
And I'm happy to sit on it um with with you, if there's, if that's okay, if that's, so that's two for wastewater. Strategic plan, oh, counselor, first of all, we have to look at this first, but I would say that that's okay. Counselor, um I've got Counselor Graham, then Counselor Watson.
I would request that we defer those other two, the strategic plan, make a motion to defer those until our next meeting, the decisions on those two.
On which one specifically?
On the budget, sorry, in the in the strategic plan that we defer those until our next meeting with more information.
Do I have a seconder? Isn't there a, you you, sorry, we're we're, we've got a, we haven't, have you had the motion read yet, so let's continue discussion, Deputy Mayor Noble, you were going to say something. Or were you, was I wrong? Oh, sorry, pardon me, absolutely, thank you, Counselor Halpin.
Yeah.
Counselor Watson.
Uh through you, Mister Mayor, so the water wastewater financial planning. If we would have just had Watson Associates do that report, we wouldn't have to do this at all, is that correct? Because we wanted to see if we could cost, have cost savings and we wanted to see if our staff, financial staff. Uh uh could work with Watson a little bit, but. uh, uh, could work with Watson a little bit, but Watson could, and Associates could have did everything from the get-go and we wouldn't be here right now, is that correct?
Mr. Brooks?
Uh, no, I, I think it is important to have, uh, some council members on that steering committee so that they can help steer the ship of where we, uh, head with, uh, the water wastewater rates. Regardless, uh, if we were to do it in-house or, uh, you know, strictly through the consultant. I would still recommend that, uh, there are members of council that, uh, sit on a committee to, to help steer that.
And who else was, Norm, did you say you, you wanted to sit on? No, Norm wanted to sit on budget. And wastewater, can I have Counselor Graham on this, please, or?
I would like to be on budget as well, please.
Okay. Okay. Your, your point is I'm confused. Very good. Okay. Counselor Connors, please.
So I think that all of these positions, all of these volunteer positions are very important for all of us because we don't know, to quote my deputy mayor, we don't know what we don't know. So, you know, I think that this exposure is great for all of us. And I think we should all try and get on one of these committees and maybe switch next year if we can. I don't know if we'll do the strategic plan next year. I'd like to volunteer for the strategic plan committee.
Okay, we've got a lot of work, but Ms. Leach is doing it one at a time and Counselor Connors, I'm going to go here to water and wastewater. Please put your hand up if you wish to be considered for water and wastewater committee. Deputy Mayor Noble and the mayor, is that fine for everybody? Two people. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I need a mover in a second or. Counselor Halpin, Counselor Watson.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Watson. That a water wastewater financial plan steering committee be established and that council appoint Deputy Mayor Noble and Mayor Sloan to serve on the committee.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Budget steering committee, I have Counselor Graham and Counselor Watson. And Counselor Halpin's put her name in as well. I guess we'll do, um, let me just ask Ms. I need a motion for two of the members. And then we vote on it, I guess. Are you okay with that? Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have three people's names put forward. We have Norm, or sorry, we have Counselor Watson, Counselors Graham, and Counselors Halpin. Questions on the table, please. Deputy Mayor Noble.
I'll nominate the show. Start it off.
I'll, seconder, Counselor Watson. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Counselor Connors.
So are we looking for more nominations?
Yeah, and I think Counselor Watson's shown his interest and so has Counselor Halpin.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate, uh, Counselor Halpin. Um, be, only because I'm gonna be really part of the whole thing anyways. I kind of looked at the two committee members just being, uh, team leaders for times to come in and have meetings. And, and I, I'm gonna be there anyways.
Be on it, though.
I, I did before, but I don't wanna cause any infighting. I'll still be there anyhow. Uh, let, let's just, let's just get going, moving forward. I, I will.
I don't know what that means, but do we have a second or?
Good.
Counselor Bach, Bachman.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Bachman. That council appoint Counselor Halpin to serve on the budget steering committee.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Hey. Is there anything else that we need to do? So strategic plan. Um, was it Counselor Connors, Counselor Bachman? Um, was there anyone else that wished to be included? Deputy Mayor Noble. So it's open to the floor. Counselor Graham.
I would nominate Counselor Connors.
Counselor Halpin, second. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Halpin.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Bachman if he's willing.
As, as long as I'm, oh, Counselor Watson. Thank you, Counselor Halpin. So that failed. Do I have another nomination? Counselor Graham.
Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Do I have a second or for the Deputy Mayor? Counselor Watson. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried, thank you. Ms. Leach, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. Through you to council, I have another item for consideration under other business this evening. The St. Thomas Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee and the Elgin County and Central Elgin Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee are working to organize an accessibility open house event. It is to be held at the Memorial Arena at eighty Wilson Ave on September twenty-eighth from two to seven PM. Given that the event is being hosted jointly, neither Elgin County nor Central Elgin have a dedicated budget for event-related expenses. St. Thomas does provide funding and they are covering transit for the event. The accessibility coordinator has approached Elgin County and Central Elgin about the cost of, about covering the cost of ASL interpreters during the event. It is far more accessible if the interpreters attend in person for the entirety of the event. The quotation received by the accessibility coordinator is for twelve hundred dollars plus mileage at forty-one cents a kilometer. Elgin County is willing to pledge eight hundred dollars plus the mileage towards this cost. The accessibility coordinator is also hoping to add a music studio performance which will cost two hundred dollars. They are, the committee is wondering if Central Elgin would be willing to cover the four hundred dollar difference for the cost of the ASL interpreters plus two hundred dollars for the music performance totaling six hundred dollars. I would ask for council consideration in approving this cost, uh, to come from a budget determined in, uh, discussion with the Director of Financial Services.
Is there a time limit on this, or I, I don't know why it's come up in this, in this other business, cause I had no idea we had other business for this.
The reason that the item is coming up in this way is because it was received after the agenda was published. Uh, the committee just met earlier today to discuss plans for the event and the item was raised. In order to secure both the interpreters and the performers, uh, the accessibility coordinator just requires notice as soon as possible so that she can help cover the cost in other areas if Central Elgin is not participating.
Uh, Counselor Halpin.
I'd move to support that.
Deputy Mayor Noble, seconding.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That the municipality of Central Elgin provides six hundred dollars in funding support for the accessibility open house two thousand twenty-three.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Ms. Greenall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to confirm that we actually have a motion for the Strategic Planning Steering Committee for the two members. I think in all of the confusion, we may have chosen the members, but do we actually have a motion? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can I get a mover in a second or to proceed into closed session, please? Counselor Connors, Counselor Halpin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Halpin. That council proceed into closed session at eight twenty-one PM. In order to address a matter pertaining to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, a proposed repending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board, and litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? No. Sure, yeah, I'm gonna go too. Take a couple of minute break, folks. Thank you. Uh, to adjourn closed session, return to open session, if I could please get a mover and seconder, Deputy Mayor Noble and Counselor Connors.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors. The council adjourned from closed session and returned to open session at nine thirty PM.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. CS two Civic Environmental Committee membership, can I get a mover in a second or? Counselor Bachman, Counselor Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That CS two regarding civic and environmental committee membership be received for information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. CS three Old Dexter Line, can I get a mover in a second or please? Counselor Connors, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That CS three regarding Old Dexter Line be received for information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Economic Development, CS four mover in a second or please? Counselor Watson, Counselor Halpin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Halpin. That CS four regarding economic development be received for information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. CS five, can I get a mover in a second or please? Counselor Halpin, Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That CS five regarding litigation be received for information and that staff proceed as directed by council.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Bylaw two eight two zero, mover in a second or? Counselor Connors, Counselor Halpin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Halpin. That bylaw two eight two zero be read a first and second time.
Over in a second or? Counselor Watson, Counselor Bachman. Oh, shoot, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Sorry, that's, uh, eat my diet coke. So, yep, that's the third and final reading, a mover in a second or please? There we go, Deputy Mayor Noble. And Counselor Graham.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Graham. That bylaw two eight two zero be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed and carried. And lastly, for adjournment, Counselor Bachman, Deputy Mayor Noble.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble. That the regular meeting of council dated Thursday, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three be adjourned at nine thirty-three PM. And that the next regular meeting of council be scheduled for Monday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven o'clock PM.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, everyone.